We already have zones. When was the last time you read our zone? So, it's already structured and filled out. When was the last time you read our zone? Have you read our zone? How have you read our zone? Good luck with it.
Actually, I don't know zoning on one. It's different from one.
We're gonna get started. I was instructed about 10 minutes ago that there's too many people in the room and that they had a fire inspection done of this room today and that for public safety reasons, they've reduced the amount of people that can be in the room at any given moment. How many people can be in the room?
Fire inspector told me 49. The inspection was not done today. This is a longstanding number based on the size of the room, on our rule.
2006. It just looked different to me tonight than two weeks ago. We had bought extra chairs in the room and tonight they're gone. So, I'm very sorry. And I'm not saying I don't want to start this meeting. It's a matter of safety. And I checked, you know, I checked with the fire inspector today. The devil checks the number, 49, and then 20 out in the foyer. So, it is, it's a matter of safety.
If there's anyone who wants to speak when the thing goes on, you could go to my seat and I'll go to the back.
Ladies and gentlemen, I think there's a way if people want to speak, I mean, probably rotate through somehow to make sure you get your viewpoint heard. The main problem is this group here in the center, there's no exit from the room and that's the only way out. So, we're gonna have to clear that. We can have 49 here, 20 out there, and we don't necessarily want to get sighted over it. That's not my rule, is what the way it's been since 2006. We'd have to clear the center part out so people can have an in and out access. Appreciate cooperation for it.
Yes. Brian. Is this after 80 years? Yes. It's ours, yeah. I just brought it to you. I brought samples of, you know, not, it can't feel too tall. Okay, I'm gonna get started and then there's a lot of people here. And as, as, I'm gonna start and speak for about five minutes just to give everyone an idea of what's going on and then I'll let people speak and whoever's waiting in the hall can speak first and maybe we can rotate out that way. I'm very sorry for the inconvenience. But on the flip side, I am extremely glad to see so many people here to show counsel how you feel. Excuse me, I need to stay quiet. Okay, I've called this meeting for two reasons. Can we all please rise for the pledge of allegiance and prayer? Amen. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
The end. We'll call. Yes. Here.
Yes.
Here. Here. First of all, I'd like to thank council for coming out tonight. The last Tuesday of every month is normally the one night where we don't have to come out and normally we can be home with our families. So, first of all, I'd like to say thank you for coming out and I'd also like to thank everyone that's here this evening. I know the weather's bad, it's cramped, and it's not a good way for many of you that I've never seen in this room before to see how things operate, but better planning next time may help facilitate a better solution. And that's why I've called this meeting. The first thing I want to do is quell some rumors that have been going around town for a week. The rumor is that there is a said man camp coming into town. And I want to start this meeting by telling everyone in this room that there has been not one thing that has been brought to the planning commission that states that, okay? So, I want to ease your worries a little bit. There was a presentation to council last week in regards to the possibility of someone bringing in a motel along Route 46. I think the word was hotel. And along with that, some commercial business on 165 that would go along with it. It was presented that it would be for the oil and gas industry and I think that that language is probably what spurred this entire conversation. I'm not here to tell you tonight whether it is or isn't because we haven't seen it. So, with that, I attended a meeting Saturday. First of all, if any of you read in the paper, it was a pretty heated, heated meeting last Tuesday. And for that, I apologize. I don't think it's one of the rare times I wasn't involved in any back and forth, but I'm sorry that it went that way and I hope tonight doesn't. I hope that there's no one in this room and no personalities will conflict at times and this is a very heated issue, that's why so many people are here. But I would ask whenever I give you guys time to come up and speak, if you want to, that you don't finger point, you don't attack. It's gonna do absolutely no good to anyone in this room to do so. I've called this meeting for two reasons. I asked the planning commission chair on Saturday just to have, to call for a special meeting of the planning commission to review our ordinances in regards to long-term stay motels in town and also to have a discussion about the creation of an architectural review board. The meeting was called and set and within the hour, I went up to do my treadmill, I came back down and there was a voicemail that the meeting had been canceled. And I think it's something that is direly important and didn't understand why it was canceled, but in this position, I have the ability to call a council meeting. So, I did and I'm glad to see everyone show up. But what I'd like to do tonight is quash some of the fears, also let you guys present what you believe is going on from a zoning standpoint that brought you here tonight. I personally want this architectural review board to be created because I believe everywhere where there is one, home values are much higher. Aesthetics look nicer and everything that you look at, there is, there's planning to it, there's organization to it. And as long as we don't go crazy with it, which I think you can, I am a very conservative person and I'm not for big government in any way, shape, or form, but I believe that we have to have some type of regulations to protect the investments that we all have, both residential and commercial. I think that we chose to live in Columbia because of the way that it's zoned and it gives us the flexibility to have this control. That's why I've asked for this council meeting. With council, we can ask the planning commission to look at certain things. Council ultimately makes all of these votes. So, what I've done tonight was I've asked for us to get together so that we can have a discussion about the creation of an architectural review board, which I believe we should do probably first. And then secondary, look at specific regulations to our code as far as what we have for hotels currently. To me, there are differences between hotels and motels. This was presented as a hotel and to me, a hotel gives access to everyone from the same spot. You're not parking cars in front of individual doors like a dormitory and things of that nature. But we don't have anything really right now as far as I know and I don't pretend to know all of this. I just got involved in the planning commission two months ago. I'm not an architect, I'm not an engineer. I just know a good investment when I see one and what could potentially ruin it. And so, I'm asking for all of our input and advice in the creation of this. It's not something that I want to do, it's something that I want council to do. I want council to ask the planning commission to start down the road of creating this. I've gone online and I've had help because this is not something I can do on my own, but I've found samples of multiple architectural review boards and how they're created. And I can read every one of these sheets. I literally, I brought probably 100 documents with me tonight in case we need to discuss any specific thing. But what I want to do is try to just present the idea of an architectural review board to council and get your input on it. And then I'd also like to do the same thing in regards to regulating long-term stay motels. For instance, to the best of my knowledge, if someone comes and stays at the Dutch Village Inn right now and they stay there for 30 days, 60 days, 90 days, six months, and it's their residence while they're living here, I don't believe they're claiming any kind of income tax to Columbia or anything else, but it's their main residence while they're here. There's nothing shoring up those types of things in town. I don't believe, from what I've read, that if someone wants to park a commercial vehicle while they're staying at one, as long as they're moving it the next morning, there are things that allow them to do that. We need to just shore them up. I don't know what they all are, but that's what the planning commission would be for. So, when I called the meeting of the planning commission, I wanted the five of us to get together so we can go through this together with many heads, many ideas, and say, this makes sense, this doesn't make sense, this is over-regulating, cut this out, but we need to have this in place. So, that, the idea to me of an architectural review board would be something that would be created by council that would be probably seated member-wise by planning commission, although that could be banner discussed and changed at will. But to take people whose jobs right now it is within the city to review the plans that are coming in and add a layer to it of, do we, and I'm not saying this facetiously, but do we want a purple building or an orange building or do we only want brick and this type of facade in this type of area in town? I don't think we need it to have everywhere, but we need to have zoning that says, in this, this area, this is protected, in this area, this is protected, this area, there is no protection. So, but we don't have that to the best of my knowledge right now. I was told by Donna that Dan said we do have a lot of protection already and I think that's awesome, if it is. I think we can go through that also because that may stem a lot, to subside a lot of fears and then we can build off of that. All I'm looking for is something to protect our investments and not just for today or not for one specific business. I was asked to, this is cart before the horse, we shouldn't be doing anything until we hear from this business and what they have to present. We haven't presented anything yet. You're making a rash decision. My opinion is if I hear from someone and then I decide how to handle it, then I'm reactively taking care of something that is discriminating against someone. If our code says they can do it, they should be allowed to do it. So, I believe we need to do this and we need to do it rapidly so that we have things in place before we would hear from anyone so that we can say, yes, we want you in Columbia, but we want you to fit within these guidelines. And right now, I want those, the guidelines are vague, I mean, especially in regards to your fears. I mean, I had never even heard of the word man camp until a week ago and I would assume most of us, most of us haven't. So, I can't imagine that there's something within our zoning regulations that would protect that when it just started popping up. The oil and gas industry is new and although we have a living charter and can change things, in the years that I've sat up here, I haven't heard anything of it. So, I'm sure that we do have things to protect against certain appearances or things that are detrimental to town and those are all good, but I'm looking for something specifically to that that eases all of your minds because that's why you're here, I assume. So, with that, I'm gonna open up, anyone that wants to come to the microphone to discuss their opinion of the creation of an architectural review board in town. I need one person at a time. When you come up, you need to state your name, for the record, what your name and where you live and our rules state that you have up to three minutes to speak. And because of how many people are here, if you need three minutes, so be it, if you don't, even better. Anyone would like to start?
My name is Skip Liston. My wife and I built a single-family house in Old Saybrook about two years ago. We didn't come to Columbia because we were forced to. We came to Columbia because we fell in love. We fell in love with the people, we fell in love with the geography, everything about the city, including we felt safe. And you have people that have bought houses here, nice place to raise my family. You have people that bought houses here that said, nice place to retire. I feel good about this place and I do feel safe. Now, we want this place to grow just like everybody else does, but it has to grow in an orderly fashion. It can't be haphazard, it can't be shoot from the hip. There's got to be some kind of procedures, policies put in place to dictate that. If somebody comes in and puts a proposal in front of you, then with those procedures, you can say, you fill the bill. Or you don't, you're wasting my time. You don't have to be reactionary, you don't have to shoot from the hip on this thing and everybody would treat it the same way. I think that's fair and I think that's your job. You need to go off and put this in place for us so that we're comfortable, so that we can live here and know that five years, 10 years from now, it's gonna be a nice place to live. Thank you.
My name's Mary West. I live at Firestone Farms. I've been designing dental offices for 37 years. I've probably done 400 offices throughout Pittsburgh, throughout Cleveland. And when I do that, most of the time it's commercial buildings. Solon didn't become Solon, Hudson didn't become Hudson unless they had a strategic plan, unless they had rules and regulations. I'm not saying we want to be a Hudson, but I do believe that we need some rules and regulations on commercial buildings. I looked at what Campfield has for just hotels. I mean, they have seven pages. We have a half a paragraph. I do want to applaud, is it Beckett? Was that her name? She's a nice lady and a good lady and she tried to call a meeting so that at least they could discuss it and I applaud her for that. Without a strategic plan, I mean, to say that we could just build whatever is naive and I hope that we have, and I do believe we have intelligent people here and people that love this community as I do and they'll put their heart and soul into coming up with some type of plan that's in writing with rules and regulations and that look into the future, a five-year plan, a 10-year plan, a 20-year plan or where Columbia wants to be. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Dani Clancy. Not my first time before this board. We moved to Columbia four years ago from out of state. We'd never been to Ohio. We looked all in this area and we fell in love with Columbia because of the town that it is, because we feel safe, because of the beauty of it. I think everyone's getting a little bit worked up over the word man camp. I don't think that's even, the project that has been proposed, no one is saying that's a man camp, but what it did bring to light, I think, for a lot of residents is the possibility of that happening here because we are in a prime location and because it's happening. Oil and gas drilling is happening all around us. So, I think what we're proposing is to put those rules and regulations in place to prevent them from coming here and to say, these are our rules and regulations. If this is not what you're planning, then you need to find another home because this is our home. This is where we raise our kids, this is where we have our businesses and we want to keep it the way that it is. We all want development, we all want growth, we all want nice businesses, put up a great hotel, put up a Panera. We're all for that. We're all for what's happening in Columbia. We just don't want it done properly and we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Anyone else?
I'm Grace Steyer. I'm involved in businesses in Columbia. We have Dutch cover, the Dutch Village Inn, the Dutch, you know, properties, it's what we're part of. My father-in-law, who is here with me. We, our families have started in business in 1937. We've here for the long haul and we really worked hard to, you know, have businesses and with integrity, which is but our goal. So, I think one of the reasons I'm here is just to say that we are definitely for, we're business people, you know? We have visions. I know we built the Dutch Village Inn, a lot of people thought we were crazy, but we did go to the planning commission, we went to the council, we, you know, make sure we got all the approvals. We did it with our own investment money. We didn't get any tax breaks to build that. The thing I guess I would ask is that we think about the businesses that are here long-term and that are, that are really working long-term and it's hard work to run a business. I'm sure a lot of you are business people and you know that, but I just would like to make sure that the businesses that come in, that we are on the same, on a level playing field, that we really do know. One of the quotes, I've been, you know, since this has brought to my attention was really just last week, I've been trying to do a lot of research about, you know, what has happened because certainly, I'm not opposed to the gas and oil industry. I mean, we are, we're all business people and if it's, and if it's an industry that we can regulate and it can be good for us, I mean, that is a wonderful thing. We're not opposed to business. But one of the things I did try to read about, some of the things that were happening in North Dakota because that could be a model for us of the good things that have happened, but also maybe the things that we should be wary of. I think it's always good to look and one of the statements I read, and I think that we need to be careful of, is what do you think is gonna happen when we have an influx of wealthy strangers who lack integrity? So, what we want to do is make sure that we have things in place, that we don't have to worry that we would get taken in with somebody else's ideas that really didn't represent what we have, but yet we could still have a great plan, that we would really have a great community. It would be wonderful to see Columbia grow, I think. So, I would really, really ask that we would do a planning commission, the architectural review commission, that we're not sitting ducks because sometimes someone who might lack integrity might pick on a place that doesn't have zoning or whatever and they think, oh man, they're unaware I'm gonna, I'm gonna pop there. So, we want to make sure that we're not unaware and I think that's probably the most, the most important reason that I would ask that you would do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Crowe and I live over in the Garrett Hills. And I'd just like to add a little to what she just said. It has been documented, there's something called the Gillette syndrome. This stems from the shale boom. Drinking, divorce, delinquency, and depression. If you have a place that is just what they call a man camp, even if it's, it's a beautiful place and it's just for the oil and the shale workers, I think we're gonna run into a lot of problems. There is so much documentation out of there from North Dakota, from Wyoming, Colorado, from Pennsylvania, that they have an increase in drunk and driving, power raising, rape, drug use, increased traffic violations. This puts an increased burden on our police, on the legal system. DUIs are up 60% in Bradford, 50% in Towanda. These are all documented things, you know, that we need to take into consideration too. We need to have everything in place before this would ever go through. Alexander Fuller wrote that the oil patch jobbers, roughnecks, offering boredom, cause exploding crime rates, their drug of choice is primarily crystal meth. They have ripped the roots out of community values, family values, and property values. So, please, take this into big consideration before anything's done.
Ma'am? What was the term that you used there that you started out with, please? Gillette syndrome? Gillette syndrome?
Gillette, yes. I'm Stuart Strassweld. I'm an attorney from Youngstown, but I also own property on Main Street in Columbia. I think we need to go back to what the mayor is proposing and why, and the benefits of it. If you have architectural design standards in 40 If this is not what you're planning, then you need to find another home," because this is our home. This is where we raise our kids. This is where we have our businesses, and we want to keep it the way that it is. We all want development. We all want growth. We all want nice businesses. Put up a great hotel. Put up a Panera. We're all for that. We're all for what's happening in Columbiana. We just don't want it done properly, and we want to make sure that everybody's on the same page.
Anyone else?
I'm involved in businesses in Columbiana. We have Dutch cover, the Dutch Village Inn, the Dutch, you know, properties. It's what we're part of. My father-in-law is here with me. Our families have started in business in 1937. We've here for the long haul, and we really worked hard to, you know, have businesses and with integrity, which is but our goal. So I think one of the reasons I'm here is just to say that we are definitely for, we're business people, you know? We have visions. I know we built the Dutch Village Inn. A lot of people thought we were crazy, but we did go to the planning commission. We went to the council. We, you know, made sure we got all the approvals. We did it with our own investment money. We didn't get any tax breaks to build that. The thing, I guess I would ask, is that we think about the businesses that are here long-term and that are really working long-term, and it's hard work to run a business. I'm sure a lot of you are business people, and you know that, but I just would like to make sure that the businesses that come in, that we are on the same, on a level playing field, that we really do know. One of the quotes I've been, you know, since this has brought to my attention was really just last week. I've been trying to do a lot of research about, you know, what has happened, because certainly, I'm not opposed to the gas and oil industry. I mean, we are, we're all business people, and if it's, and if it's an industry that we can regulate and it can be good for us, I mean, that is a wonderful thing. We're not opposed to business. But one of the things I did try to read about, some of the things that were happening in North Dakota, because that could be a model for us of the good things that have happened, but also maybe the things that we should be wary of. I think it's always good to look. And one of the statements I read, and I think that we need to be careful of, is what do you think is going to happen when we have an influx of wealthy strangers who will lack integrity? So what we want to do is make sure that we have things in place, that we don't have to worry that we would get taken in with somebody else's ideas that really didn't represent what we have. But yet, we could still have a great plan, that we would really have a great community. It would be wonderful to see Columbiana grow, I think. So I would really, really ask that we would do a planning commission, the architectural review commission, that we're not sitting ducks, because sometimes someone who might lack integrity might pick on a place that doesn't have zoning or whatever, and they think, "Oh, man, they're unaware I'm going to, I'm going to pop there." So we want to make sure that we're not unaware, and I think that's probably the most important reason that I would ask that you would do that. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is James Crowe, and I live over in Lake Arrowhead. And I'd just like to add a little to what she just said. It has been documented, there's something called the Gillette Syndrome. This stems from the shale boom. Drinking, divorce, delinquency, and depression. If you have a place that is just what they call a man camp, even if it's a beautiful place, and it's just for the oil and the shale workers, I think we're going to run into a lot of problems. There is so much documentation out of there from North Dakota, from Wyoming, Colorado, from Pennsylvania, that they have an increase in drunk and driving, power raising, rape, drug use, increased traffic violations. This puts an increased burden on our police, on the legal system. DUIs are up 60% in Bradford, 50% in Towanda. These are all documented things, you know, that we need to take into consideration, too. We need to have everything in place before this would ever go through. Alexander Fuller wrote that the oil patch jobbers, roughnecks, offering boredom, cause exploding crime rates. Their drug of choice is primarily crystal meth. They have ripped the roots out of community values, family values, and property values. So please, take this into big consideration before anything's done.
Ma'am? What was the term that you used there that you started out with, please? Gillette syndrome? Gillette syndrome?
Gillette, yes. I'm Stuart Strassfeldt. I'm an attorney from Youngstown, but I also own property on Main Street in Columbiana. I think we need to go back to what the mayor is proposing and why, and the benefits of it. If you have architectural design standards enforced by an architectural review board, number one, you have uniformity. And I think that's very important when you're looking to do commercial development in a small community. Canfield has it. Howland has it. Those are our local communities. We don't have to go to Hudson, you know, but our local communities have it. You have experienced people who are enforcing these design standards, and you maintain enhanced property values. That's why they have it. I do not believe, and Attorney Blaisel could correct me, I do not believe our zoning notices regarding hotels have been updated since 1969. I don't want to mistake that.
In fact, I don't know the date, the definition of a hotel is very clearly stated in our code.
Right, but I don't think that's specifically been updated since 69.
And I don't know that the definition of hotels changed since 1969, but that's subject to a planning commission.
Right. So I think it's time. I think we're all here because of the lack of communication as to what's going on. You know, people came to a meeting last week, and all of a sudden, you know, there was discussion about a tip without having any type of disclosure about what this development was going to be. If the rumor is true that there are bids out there, then there should be designs out there. No one has disclosed designs. So part of the reason that we're all here is because of the unknown, and perhaps, you know, we can, it's easy to go backwards in time. Perhaps if we went backwards in time and we had the known, it would have allayed some of the people's fears. But getting back to the mayor's proposal, it's what we really need to do to move forward. It's, you know, every, you want to, if you bring a business into town, the business wants to know, "What are your standards?" And the people who live here are entitled to know what the standards are to make sure that everything is applied even handling. So may I applaud your efforts, and I hope everyone else does.
Thank you.
My name is Fred Lamb. I live at 151 Lake Shore Drive. Ma'am, gentlemen, I appreciate the opportunity to be able to talk. Like the gentleman a little while ago, my wife and I also chose to come to Columbiana. And we chose this as a community. I don't live behind walls in a motor all day. I live in a community, you know, easier community. I expect a community to look like something. And so what I'm looking at is saying, "What's Columbiana going to look like in 2030, 2040?" Now, I may not be here, but Columbiana will be. What's it going to look like? It's our responsibility to make sure it looks like what we hope it looks like, and like the people who came here, like my wife and myself, came here because it's a community we wanted to come to. Now, I'm a long advocate, we live in a lot of places all over this country, and I've long advocated, as a community, you grow or you die. But how do you grow? What does that growth look like? You know, the analogy would be, are we a weed going to be pulled out and thrown away? Or are we some kind of stately plant that people are going to look to come to in 2040 and 2050? I would hope we start now to think about, what do we need to do to ensure Columbiana looks like the attractive community in 2050 that it does right now? Thank you all kindly.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'm a resident of Columbiana, and I currently serve as the executive director for the Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber would like to thank council. We would like to thank you for taking this wise and prudent step to review the ordinances that haven't, it sounds like, been looked at since 1969. We feel there is a reasonable responsibility to look at these to protect our residents and their property values without being restrictive to growth and development of Columbiana. We look forward to working with you on this.
Thank you.
I'm Ralph Whitmer, just to support my daughter Grace, and of course, Whitmer and the first family own the Dutch House Restaurant, the Dutch Village Inn. This last, just what we're all about, a little bit, last weekend, there was two church retreats at the end, and last week, then there was a bunch of young, nice young men at the restaurant. I asked them, I said, "What for group is this?" It was Louisville's baseball team. Well, that's a quite a ways from Louisville. They came over to Columbiana because, let's say, it was breath of fresh air, and we're all, like Grace said, we're for development and progress because we spent a lot of money to do that. But in the same token, if you build a low-cost, easy-access motel, there's trouble. I just want to make sure that that isn't what we're doing, because we hate to have the church people, the church retreats, say, "Well, I guess we won't go to Columbiana anymore," or the Louisville baseball team say, "Well, that isn't, if we're going to be riffraff, we might as well have stayed there."
Jacob Sevek, Columbian, Ohio, Fairfield School Road. This is a little touchy for me, because I've spent the majority of my life here except when I was in the service. So I've got some heartstrings plucked by all of what's been going on last week. But I would start with, if I want to live in Canfield or Poland, where I'm restricted on everything I do, that's where we would live. If I wanted an HOA, I would move into one of those communities. I don't. My family and I choose to live in Columbiana where we do, because we don't, we're not restricted by all these other entities, by another government organization, whether it's an HOA, or another ordinance, or another committee. The last thing Columbiana needs is more big government, with the amount of big government we have coming down on us from the federal level down. To review and update what we already have, that makes perfect sense. It's old. I don't think anybody would be opposed to those being updated, but to start laying on new rules and restrictions, which could potentially cripple the growth of Columbiana, being done strategically, hopefully, in a weak economy as it is, in my opinion, isn't the smartest way to go. But at the same time, there should be an updated charter and ordinances, and that to continue that growth in the right direction. But I didn't hear anybody complain in September when they talked about in their big proposal out of 714 to put a motel out there. So for all of a sudden, there's this huge uproar on this one, doesn't seem to make a lot of sense that people are picking and choosing which developments are going to be, point here, are going to be picked on or, you know, beat up over, over another one. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jessica Booms. I'm a new resident to Columbiana, just built a home here. I appreciate your time and your attention to this matter. I would like to first start saying that I have two young children. I'm worried about the social implications of not just this single-story motel, but any single-story motel that were to come into our city. I think that it's wise to look at our ordinances, so it's not just for this particular project. We want to be protected, whether it's this one or another one in six months or 12 months down the road. I'm just a little concerned also with the effect that it may have on our property values. I live just about a mile from where this would take place, and I really can't see that a single-story motel is going to increase my property value, and I'm also a little concerned as to, you know, if this, if this isn't long-term, and as you read probably in the Salem News or the Morning Journal, they talk about, you know, is this a long-term industry that's going to be around, the shale, you know, I mean, you read about that a lot. So I'm concerned, is this going to be a motel that's going to be around for a long time, or is this a seven or eight-year project, and they're going to leave town, and we're going to have a dilapidated building on our hands? So I just think it is wise to put, you know, some ordinances in place just to protect the citizens. I do have to say that coming here, all it does show me is that there's a lot of people that care, as all you do, too, about our community and what happens here. So that's it. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, if not, I'm going to...
Hello, Roger here. I live in Old Sabre. We also offer businesses in town here. The one thing I want to point out that, in addition to architectural review committee and the necessity for it, the architecture review committee, most municipalities with the city manager rely on aesthetic guidelines as well. They call them architectural and design standards typically. Howland, you can look at the CR1 through CR3 districts, pages 18 through 33, was adopted January 12, 2014. They're ever-evolving, constantly getting updated. We need to do the same every year. Can you guys hear me? We need to do the same every year. So with that, I looked at recreational vehicles, and where do you put recreational vehicles? Recreational vehicles, like, I guess, the Highway Code, and I think it's chapter 300-ish, 317, they talk about it as, like, campers and whatnot. That's permitted pretty much, to my knowledge, anywhere in the city right now. I don't think we have any ordinances against it. I Googled it on AM Legal. We do have ordinance against it. Mobile homes, we do, but recreational.
One in a building, no recreational vehicle.
It does.
It says you're not allowed to live in a recreational vehicle. It doesn't say you can't have a recreational vehicle in town.
It says you can have a recreational vehicle parked in town.
You can't live if it's a residence.
Correct. You cannot.
Okay. So at what point do we consider staying in a recreation vehicle a residence? At what point do we consider staying at the Dutch House a residence? Is it 30 days?
Yes.
It is? Okay, so 30 days, then we're collecting income tax right now, so, which is great, because I thought we weren't. Going back to just other municipalities like Canfield, when they have their hotel restrictions, you can't have outside storage. You can't have commercially, you know, dumpsters and whatnot with fences around it. In other municipalities, the code may get restricted, for instance, Hudson and other areas of residential, and that's not what we're asking for. We don't want you to live in an HOA. We feel that, obviously, that this is pertaining to commercial and the guidelines that, you know, preventing a block structure with, you know, green paint or whatever may be on it. If it meets the Ohio Building Department, we're okay with it, and I'm not. Regarding the 714 plan that was brought before us, you got a timer on me up there?
I've had one for everyone, but it's not working.
Okay, good.
You may have an extra minute, because it's sticky.
I think we need to look at it from a trailer standpoint. Same thing with green space. Architectural guidelines talk about green space, and when you're building a property, you can't have so much parking spaces, you know, for whatever they may be. All of that goes into, to architectural guidelines. So when you're, when you're looking at it, take that into consideration. It involves hotels, it involves buildings, and then we have to look at, you know, how are we going to police it? And really, the architectural board, if it's five members or seven members, they could police that, and planning commission will still be very involved in the zoning, in the planning, where they need to present us a strategic plan. And my understanding is that council has to create the architectural and not planning commission.
No, all I'm looking for tonight, though, is help with the, from the planning commission with what should go into it, just because they're the ones that are seeing the businesses come through for the most part.
Okay, but regarding the 714 comment that was presented last month, there, that was presented, I believe, to planning commission.
It was.
Okay, and so the reason why we're knowledgeable of this particular situation was because it was brought as a tip, a tax increment financing program that involved taxpayer backing, so to speak. So there are differences.
One thing that I would like to point out, this is a sample, and I think I pass it out to you guys, but the architectural board of review from a power and duties, I gave, I think I gave somebody my highlighted one, I got to find the line here, but it basically says that its sole duty is to fulfill the specified powers and duties. The board shall protect and preserve the value, appearance, and use of property in which buildings are constructed or altered, to maintain a high character of community development, to protect the public health, safety, convenience, and welfare, and to protect real estate within the municipality from impairment or destruction of value. That's its core duty, and, but, I mean, just the sample that I've given you guys, if for some reason someone would go in front of this board of review and they don't like the result that they get, the next step is you go to appeal to your board of, architectural board of reviews goes to zoning and building appeals. We have that now. We have an appeals board. So, I mean, we, this isn't like saying, because this is something new, that you would have nowhere else to go, and this new entity would shut you down if it wasn't, I mean, you would, if you didn't like what they had to say, you could appeal it to the same appeals board that we currently have. So that's a, I'm, I'm all for having some form of regulation with the outlet, that I, to not over-regulate. And there is a line that you can, you can walk that says, "You really should cut your grass. It's two feet tall." And because I live next door to you, I don't like it. We do have those now, but that's what it's for, is to protect everyone that lives here. And one person's idea of what's okay may be completely different than someone else's idea of okay. I mean, we have those differences on this board. We're never going to all agree on anything, and that's why it's good to have something uniform, because then we're not worrying about personalities making the decisions. You go to the piece of paper that says, "Are we allowed to have cars sitting in front of PNC Bank right now? I don't know if we do or not. Let's go back to what their original intent was when they submitted the planning." Well, if it was, if it was in black and white on a piece of paper, we could say, "Yes, it is," or, "No, it's not." Not, "Let's go back and try to figure out what we did for them." I mean, and there are obviously going to be times where you have to bend it to make something fit, but it shouldn't be the norm that every, every one instance that comes in front of a planning commission is, got its own set of rules. I mean, I've only been on the planning commission for two, two and a half months now, but the drawings that I've been given for the most part, I've seen a couple of professional ones, but I've seen hand-drawn on notepad that we're asked to review as the business in town. I understand that starting up a business is very costly, and I don't, I don't want to hinder that, but we also have to make sure that what we're looking at that's reviewing to say, "Yes, this is, is okay for Tom, fits what we need." And the only way to do that is to have some, some form of guidelines. The one, one of these that I've looked at physically states that you have to turn in 21 copies of your site plans, because they give it to every member of council, they give it to the planning commission, they give it to the city manager, they give it to the electric department, they give it to the water head, so that everyone involved in having to operate that would be involved and know what's going on. So I don't believe we need to over-regulate, but I do believe we need to have a unified code that is the same for everyone. Is there anyone else that wants to make a comment? Because if not, I think it's probably good to hear from some council members. Hello?
Thank you for this opportunity. My name is DJ Johnson. I live at Lake Arrowhead. I do not have any comments, but I do have a question. I pretty much know where the mayor stands. I would like to know where members of council stand with regards to an architectural review committee.
We're going to...
And I request this respectfully. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'm gonna wrap up the, the public portion of this. It opened up the council members to, to discuss this. There's nothing formal on the agenda, except that when we're all done talking, go ahead. Neither am I.
Thank you for having me. Having this emergency meeting. My name is Lori Yep. I'm from Lake Shore. I was born and raised in Moore, Ohio. My husband worked 29 years at Copperwell CO before it shut down. He took a job in the Pittsburgh area, and he would not cross the state line, put a blue and gold license plate on because, but anyway. So we came to Columbiana not knowing really much, except that it was close for him to drive to the Pittsburgh area. I'd grown to love it. I was afraid my friends weren't going to come visit me, my family was not going to come visit me. But let me tell you, they can't wait to get here. They want to come to Christmas in the village, they want to come to springtime in the village, Firestone Park, you know, this is just a wonderful community, and we're really proud to be a part of it. I don't think this is big government. This is just one simple, which the gentleman just brought up. We just need an Architectural Review Committee to oversee that things stay.
Protected.
A place that everybody wants to come and visit.
Thank you.
I think I may be your last one, but Bob Stahert. First of all, I have to start off by, I made a couple apologies Wednesday after, after Tuesday's meeting. And I did apologize to the city manager. I came in and talked to him. I called Attorney Blaisdell for getting out of hand a little bit. I stopped to see Lowell Wednesday morning, I think it was, or Thursday morning, and I just wanted to apologize to him in person, but he was with a group of guys. So I do apologize. I said that, I said a few things that I shouldn't have said, but I do have a passion for this community. And in saying that, I don't have much to say tonight, but somebody had sent me something today, and it's from an attorney back in 2002 that did a lot of research and did a lot of charters. And he started off, you know, why do we need a charter? And it says, it's tempting to answer the question of why do we need a charter review and revisions, with a simple statement that things change and not to stop right there. Says, if you operate a computer, you must update your programs to achieve the best results. If you are operating your city or your village with a 1918 charter, you probably have to do some serious, you have some serious problems, but the charter can be much later invented and need revisions. Says, things change with the passage of time, and so do charters. Often, the mayor of the council appoints a committee to review and recommend changes in the charter. Either way, the charter does not call for a review commission or has an additional review. Sometimes in particular, the charter, such as a civil service, is singled out for review. The author has worked with the possibilities of alternates to charter review. These are just as good as the person who served the reviewers. All can be extremely useful. Occasionally, a review body will be recommending truly usual, truly unusual changes. The changes are necessary with the evolution that we're going through right now with our communities. So I just ask you to really take a good look at this Architecture Review Committee, and thank you, and honestly, I do apologize for last week.
The last thing that I'm going to say, and then I'm gonna, I'd like the council members to, to speak, I think we're done with the public portion now. I don't, I'm not looking tonight for you guys to vote to create this group. I'm, I'm asking you to, to give a vote of confidence, no different than you gave a vote of confidence to someone a week ago. Give a vote of confidence to the Planning Commission. You say, we, we support you going down this road. Take, take the time to, to go through, pull these hundred different samples, and let, let us do our job to plan. And it's not that we, we couldn't on our own spark that debate, but because a meeting was called and then canceled by, by the Chair of the Planning Commission, I believe that it would be best for council to, to say, you know what, we're okay with you going down this path. Let's instill that confidence, so that we, we all know, the five of us, whenever we come here to a Planning Commission meeting, we're, we're not wasting our time, that you guys are interested in something like this. And then we go through and dig in and take words from, from this one and words from this one, remove words from this one, and come up with something that's good. And when it's good, then we bring it back to you, and we, we ask you to vote on it and, and say yes or no. No, I'd, I'd like it if you removed this, or we could really like this. I'm, I'm asking for you guys to, to take the, the control of it and use the Planning Commission for what its design is and to plan. If, if we create this and we bring it back and say, we, we want the, this addition to the city, obviously, we don't have the authority to do it, you do. So I'm, I'm asking you to, to just give, give your blessing to go down this path. That, that's, that's what I had this, this meeting for tonight. But I'd, I'd like to open it up for any discussion, and then I'd, I'd ask for a, a vote.
You, you asked me earlier on about the process that we do use.
No, I said, I was told that we have protection.
Would you like to discuss that now?
Yeah.
It might be helpful for a number of people that are here.
Sure.
If you'll indulge me for just a few minutes. First of all, it's, it is great that you're all here, and everybody here has spoken, has spoken about their affection for this community. I live here too, and I share your view. And I'd just like to make an observation before I talk about the, the Planning Commission process. This town has developed Firestone Farms, Old Saybrook, Woodland Run, James Downtrace, Terra Verde, Arrowhead, and Cimberon on the residential level. You've already spoken very favorably about the Dutch Village Inn, which is a beautiful hotel. We have the New York Life Building across the street. The observation I'd like to make is that all of these developments, both commercial and residential, have been accomplished by virtue of the rules and regulations in place over the last 40 years. So everybody in this room, including myself, has benefited from the process which we've already, which is already in place and works for us. And with that in mind, I'd like to, if you'll indulge me for just a few minutes, I think maybe I can go through this in about five minutes. But it, it, there's been questions raised about the, the possibility of the new development, this hotel that's been discussed. And, and I just try to make it as simple as possible, but when a new business comes to town, even one that's a permitted use, such as a hotel in a C4 district, which is the one that's brought you all out here, the owners and investors in that enterprise bear the burden of proof of coming before the Planning Commission to convince the Planning Commission to approve their project. And there are basically three things they have to do. First of all, they have to come in and, of course, meet the building, the building code standards. And in the case of industrial and commercial properties, that's, those are state building codes. Those aren't local building codes, they're state. As Mr. Stahert can attest, when he's developing a residential unit, that's subject to our, our residential building codes, which we monitor here in town. So the, the, the individuals involved in this particular project, when and if they ever come forward, and they, as the mayor rightly indicated, they haven't, but when they do, they're going to have to bring forward their plans, state plans, approved plans, and they're also going to have to meet our zoning requirements, which I'll get into in just a moment. They're also, secondly, and this is very important, they're going to have to show how this business is going to operate. In other words, you're, okay, you're going to build this beautiful building for us, what are you going to do with it? They've got to respond to that. They've got to inform the Planning Commission as to how they're going to conduct this business. And it's very important. And they, they expect to do that. And I know, I know Mr. Hudson, who was here before, he, he knows that that's what his clients are going to have to do. They're going to have to explain all this. The Planning Commission's going to hear all this. And thirdly, and particularly in this situation, it's a little different because of this tax increment financing issue that's kind of separately involved, because that involves council. That doesn't involve the Planning Commission. And this issue has, is going to require considerable discussion and due diligence on the part of council and the part of city officials, to determine whether or not it's appropriate to go forward with a tax increment financing arrangement. And I think this lady over here raised the question early on, well, will you have a viable business for all, the long haul, even if oil and gas dries up and goes away? We need to know that. And in my judgment, and I have something to do with this as legal counsel, this council ought not to approve a tax financing arrangement unless all of those questions are answered and answered explicitly and fully. And, and so I'm just telling you this so you know what we're supposed to do up here, and that's part of what's already in place. We don't have to create anything new to do this. Now, there was a mention made of the, that this is a hotel. It is a hotel. A hotel is a lodging provided and offered to the public, and it's open to transient guests. So one question that has to be answered before the Planning Commission, if and when this ever comes before it, is the Planning, Planning Commission's right to know how this public requirement will be met, because the hotel has to be, it, it has to be a viable entity. If it serves oil and gas people, fine. I know the Dutch House has served oil and gas people for a number of years, and that, it's part of the business. But it's got to have, it's got to have a business that is lasting. And, and the Planning Commission looks at that to, to, and evaluates it. And the system that we have in place here is that, we call it a site plan review. When a new business comes to town, and the hotel, as I said, a hotel is a permitted use in this particular zone, and they have to meet the, the lot area requirements, they have to meet the lot to the yard requirements, setbacks and so forth, they have to meet building height requirements. These are all in our code and have been for 40 years, and have served us well. Now here's, here's the very, one of the most important sections, it's a very short one, I'll read it to you. Site Plan Review. All business uses specified under 1282.02, which would be this hotel, shall be permitted only after the review and approval of the site plans, therefore by the Planning Commission. And upon a finding by the Commission that this chapter and section 126032, which is the site plan review section, will be complied with. They don't do it, they're not going to be approved, and there's not going to be a shovel of dirt taken out of the ground. It's got to be done. Now, the site plan review process is, is quite comprehensive. And I, I'm gonna, I'm just going to highlight these things, where there are, there are issues here that I won't even bother to mention, but that they're there, believe me. And this is really important. The Commission may seek expert advice or cause special studies to be made. The cost of securing such advice and studies shall be borne by the applicant, the person who comes in here and says, we want, we want you to approve our business. Okay, Mr. Businessman, you come in here with studies and show us that this business is going to have longevity, it's a sound operation, it's going to, it's going to be able to pay back this tax income and financing concern that we all have. You have to prove that, though. And if you don't, you're not going to be allowed to come in the town. You're also going to have to demonstrate to us all of the development features, including the, the development features of the building. The architectural design and of the building shall be developed with consideration given to the relationship of adjacent development in terms of building height, mass, texture, material, line, pattern, and character. This Planning Commission has every right to inquire of that businessperson how he's going to build this building, even though he has to meet state specs. But we need to know for our zoning purposes if it's going to be compatible with this town. And if it's not compatible, it shouldn't come in. And Planning Commission has that control. And it talk, we have, we have parking areas, visual setbacks, where there's green, green sections, separation from other parts of the community, so that you aren't impacted if you happen to live close to where this structure is to be established. The, the, the parking provisions happen, and Bob's already alluded to the fact that you can't, you can't just park recreational vehicles there and live in them. It's, it's already prohibited. You don't need to worry about that. And all buildings and occupancies shall conform to all applicable codes, and the rest of the codes in our codified ordinances, including all criminal codes. We, we don't condone any inappropriate businesses from that perspective. And this is, this is the last point I want to make on this particular subject. All site plan reviews shall be conformed throughout the life of the enterprise. And this is what the code section says. No injurious or offensive effects shall result from the development or operation of a business. So this town, for the last 40 years, and will continue to do so, is looking out for not only the, the architectural issues with regard to new, new businesses and buildings, but also with the operation of those buildings. We've got a wonderful police department that is here to assist if people violate the law. We don't, we never assume that, but if they do, that can be handled. So I, I really felt that you needed to know that, and I also want you to hear one, two other things, if you'll bear with me. Our code, and it's 1260.05 is the section, if you want to look it up, says, if it's not permitted, it's prohibited. In other words, nobody ever thought of a man camp. Nobody, a lot of people don't even know what the man camp is. But if a businessman comes in here and says to the Plan Committee, or he wouldn't even get to the Planning Commission, he'd go to Bob Belving, as the zoning inspector, he'd say, Bob, I have a plan for a man camp that I'm going to put up in town, I'm going to put up a motel. Bob say, would say, I'm sorry, you're not, you're not even going to get to the Planning Commission, because it's not permitted, it's prohibited. You can't do it. Okay. Lastly, when all this is said and done, and applies to this proposition as well as any others that have ever come before this Plan Commission, or previous Plan Commission, when it's all said and done, the Planning Commission, if it ceased to approve the site plan, everything's okay, they've done their due diligence.